Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Hamilton County Board of Elections. Today is September the 9th, 2021, and we're calling a special meeting to order at 8:05 a.m. Do we have any veterans in the House? I think we do. If you can stand and lead us in the pledge, please.
Our pledge begins with your flag. The United States of America, and to the public, which stands one nation, one God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Also would like to indicate that proper notice has been given as required under the Ohio Revised Code 121.22. First on our agenda is approving the board meeting minutes from September the 7th, 2021.
I'll move approval of the board meeting minutes from that meeting.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? That motion carries. Next, we're gonna, it's on the agenda is a reconsideration hearing, which is request for recertification, reconsideration of certification of Cincinnati City Council candidate petitions. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to you, Ms. Powell.
Yes, Madam Chair, yesterday, I'm sorry, at the meeting on the 7th, the board did receive two-part petitions in regard to Mr. Brinkman's petitions, two affidavits regarding those part petitions. I believe that the board had agreed to take that matter up this morning. Then, board staff also received an affidavit regarding Ms. Powell's candidacy for Cincinnati City Council. That was filed yesterday morning. A copy of that is also in your packet. The board has not received any additional requests for reconsideration, other than those two, regarding those two candidates.
Okay, so we have, these are the affidavits, which we said we would review.
Are there copies of the petitions that were, you know, the problem with the signature line that's caused us to be here?
They're attached to the affidavit.
Are they attached? Okay.
Can you, Ms. Powell, can you indicate what we're looking at for the record?
Yes, in your packet, there's an affidavit that is in regards to Mr. Brinkman's Cincinnati City Council candidate petitions. The affidavit is signed by Pat Richardson. Ms. Richardson was a circulator on several part petitions where the date of signing and the circulator statement was not completed. Then you have a second affidavit from a Ms. Jacqueline Gooch, who also circulated several part petitions in regards to Mr. Brinkman's candidacy. And it's the same issue with those part petitions. There was not a date of signing and the circulator statement was not completed. Many of the part petitions, it's the address that's filled in rather, of the circulator, rather than the date of signing.
Okay, thank you for that brief summary.
So, so it's clear, the affidavits from Ms. Gooch and Ms. Richardson, again, our position was that we accept those part petitions, again, because the error seemed to be a reasonable. I mean, if anybody can see signature, address, and then just naturally, people would fill in the city and the state and their zip. It's an error, no question. We, you know, we prefer these things be to the letter perfect, but the law tells us that if you're substantially compliant otherwise, and our council instructed us the other day, that we could accept these petitions under the law. My position was that we accept them and that we voted two to two on that day to accept them. I think the situation is the same. Ms. Richardson and Ms. Gooch, and then ultimately, Ms. Powell, on behalf of Ms. Powell, Kimberly Springer filed a similar affidavit suggesting that they just made, you know, a simple error in their petition. Again, one that is not deemed fatal from our legal counsel's perspective and favors giving them access to the ballot and letting the voters decide. So, my position on the reconsideration has not changed. Not sure where my colleagues on the board are, but I'm prepared today to make a renewed motion upon the reconsideration action filed here by both parties that we allow Ms. Powell and Mr. Brinkman to appear on the November ballot.
Mr. Trantfilo, I think we should probably handle these one at a time.
I was, yeah.
Individually.
I'll withdraw my motion to see.
Well, regarding, if you would restate it, regarding Mr. Brinkman, and then?
I'll start with Ms. Powell.
Okay. Ladies first.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We did say that we would accept these affidavits and review, and under good faith, we took that and reviewed, in my mind, you know, as I reviewed it, I haven't seen anything on this affidavit that has caused me to move towards where you guys are. And on the last point on the affidavits, all three of them are pretty much identical, says, "With respect to the statement of circulator on each of the part petitions attached here too, I did in fact execute and sign the statement of circulator on each of the part petitions and did so on or after the last date of the signature on the respective part petition." It still didn't identify a date at all. It could have been today, today's date is after the last date of the signature. There's no date indicated. And I still don't see how you cure a deficiency that's required, and the city came and interpreted their own charter, and we've been consistent that if someone does not fulfill the obligation of filling out the form, and it says strict compliance, that's what she said, our representative from the city, defending their charter, said that it has to be a strict compliance, that it's required, it's not permissive. And there's gonna be plenty of situations, we opened this Pandora's Box, you know, we have to be consistent. And the city charter, we asked for an opinion from the city. They gave us an opinion in writing, they came and defended it in person, and I'm still not where you guys are. Fair enough.
And I would just like to say, I did as well, in good faith, state that I wanted to look at the affidavits, review them. At no time did I say I would go not look at them and not review them. And when you look at the fact that Mr. Brinkman and we're talking about Ms. Powell, their ballots were carefully reviewed by a nonpartisan team, and they were found to have omissions regarding completion of their petitions by the dates of the circulator that was missing. My intent and hope was, yes, there was error, they did not complete the forms as needed, and so this can be an educational opportunity to learn what not to do the next time and not bring into some type of situation where you're trying to go around what the facts are. And based on the request and response by the Cincinnati solicitor, who, as Mr. Mallory has said, indicated, which is what we did as the board, as election officials, we wanted to get an understanding by the city of Cincinnati, basically, what their guidelines were and give us some sense what those, what the process was. Basically, because I have worked with multiple communities and governments that have home rule, I do understand what home rule means, and I do also understand that they are guided by those, by the home rule. So, the petitions of Mr. Brinkman and Ms. Powell were lacking the information, this information when they filed on 8/19/21. So, I believe it is, as an election member, our fiduciary responsibility to uphold the law with integrity and consistency. It's when you start to become inconsistent that you begin to set yourself up for problems and issues. And so, this to me is important regardless, period, of what your political affiliation is or your reputation. I believe Ms. Powell has a great reputation, and I believe the other person probably has a good reputation, but we have to keep the politics out of this and do what is fair with respect and integrity. So, by fulfilling our fiduciary responsibility and being consistent, and consistent is the word, this prevents any sense or perception or misperception of voter fraud, of election fraud, which we all know in this room, the Hamilton County Board of Elections is basically proud of the fact that we work hard to make sure there are no signs of voter fraud or election fraud, and we uncover them, when we do, we follow the right route. But the worst thing we can do is begin to open up, as Mr. Mallory said, Pandora's Box, and then everybody will be looking for a little loophole which to try to get their ballots and petitions completed. The other thing, both candidates are registered. One is a Republican and one is a Democrat, and they have the same defects. So, from my perspective, we treat each one as equal, and therefore, I am not reconsidering my vote to certify the ballots of Mr. Brinkman and Ms. Powell.
Seems that counsel's here for one of the parties.
About Mr. Stevens? Oh, okay.
Very good. I don't wait, I think it's appropriate to give counsel an opportunity to be heard on the motion, but.
Yes, yes, sir.
Whenever you're ready, Matthew.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hartman?
I am a little lost. We talk about upholding the law with integrity and consistency, and the law is that the first and foremost, that the legal advisor for this Board of Elections is not the Cincinnati Solicitor's Office, it's the county prosecutors. And so I think in terms of transparency and openness, this board needs to say, who authorized the seeking of a legal opinion from somebody other than the legal counsel for this Board of Elections? The Board, did the Board authorize that request even for a legal opinion from somebody other than their statutory legal counsel? The public needs to know that. In terms of the petitions, I think there's actually a preliminary issue beyond, before we even start talking about the date, and this concerns Ms. Powell, concerns Mr. Brinkman, it also concerns Ms. Matthews, who I'm here on behalf of, we're not trying to resurrect signatures, but, and also it concerns the six people that this board on Tuesday determined not to place on the ballot. This board had no legal authority on Tuesday to invalidate any of those petitions. So, we want to talk about upholding the law with integrity and consistency. I would refer the board to Section 3501.39 of the Revised Code. Do you need a copy, Dave? Section 3501.39 provides for protest and the invalidation of petitions. There are four methods by which, or four procedures, under which a petition may be invalidated by this board. Three of them, set forth in Divisions A1, A2, and A3, require that a protest be filed. A4 allows the Board of Elections on its own or suaspekte to invalidate a petition when it violates the requirements of Chapter 35, Chapter 3513, or any other requirements established by law. And the board is proceeding to invalidate petitions with invalid number of signatures, and in this case, and with respect to Ms. Powell and Mr. Brinkman, without the date indicated on it. But there's a time limit by which this board can invalidate. If you go down to Section B, it says, "A Board of Elections shall not invalidate any declaration of candidacy or nominating petition after the 60th day prior to the election at which the candidate seeks nomination to the office." The 60th day was last Friday, September 3rd. But there's an exception to that provision when you deal with municipal corporations, home rule corporations, and that's in Section C1. And C1 reads, and I'm quoting, "If a petition is filed for the nomination or election of a candidate in a charter municipal corporation with a filing deadline that occurs after the 90th day before the day of the election," that's what we have in this case, because the petitions were due August 19th. The provision then continues on, "A Board of Elections may invalidate the petition within 15 days after the date of that filing deadline." 15 days after August 19th was Friday, September 3rd. And so then, you look at case law addressing that, in State Exr. Jaeger versus Richland Board of Elections, 136 Ohio State Third, 327, the Supreme Court explained that Revised Code 3901.39B imposes a time limit upon the board's ability to invalidate petitions. Then in the case of State Exr. Davis versus Summit County Board of Elections, 137 Ohio State Third, 222, from 2013, the board says, "A board's authority under Revised Code 3901.39A3, which is now A4, to invalidate a candidate's petition on its own initiative is subject to a time limitation in Revised Code 3501.39B. The time limit in 3501.39B is expressly subject to its own exception," and then it talks about the municipal corporations. So, and then finally, the 6th District in Webb versus Lucas County Board of Elections, 195 Ohio App. Third, 396, from 2011, "We hold that the time limit set forth in 3501.39C1 limits the board's authority to invalidate a petition filed in a municipal election date with a filing date that occurs after 90 days before the day of the election, either suaspekte or after a valid protest is filed. 3501.39C1 limits the time the board may invalidate a contested petition in a municipal election to 15 days after the date of the filing deadline, regardless of whether a protest is filed." So, we want to talk about upholding the law with integrity and consistency. The law prohibits this board from doing what it did on Tuesday. It had no legal authority to invalidate any petitions on Tuesday for a municipal election in the city of Cincinnati, because 15 days after the filing deadline was last Friday, September 3rd. And for that reason, and that reason alone, this board has the legal duty to place all of the candidates that it invalidated on Tuesday to place their names on the ballot. All six that they said had insufficient signatures. Ms. Powell, because of the date missing, Mr. Brinkman, because of the date missing. That is upholding the law, and the case law and the precedent is clear. And if this board wants to ignore the law and start invalidating petitions, that opens a Pandora's Box, because which provisions of the state law that governs this board, that this board took an oath to uphold, are we gonna start applying and not applying? You've been put on notice, if you don't, you know, that that is what the law requires. You have no legal authority, with or without a date, with or without enough signatures, to invalidate any of those petitions. That's what the law requires. You've got, a time limit has been set for this board, this board acted after the deadline. So, I would ask the board, not only on behalf of Ms. Powell, Mr. Brinkman, and Ms. Matthews, to place their names on the ballot, because you cannot invalidate their petitions when you did, but you also have to put the other six or five on, and I'd ask that on behalf of Mark Miller, who is a resident and voter here in the city of Cincinnati. So, thank you. If there's any questions, I.
Counsel, now at this point, excuse me, Madam Chair, several catchphrases there from Mr. Hartman, you know, a long practicing attorney in our community, mentioned Mr. Miller's name, who's regularly a plaintiff in various litigation. Also, and I understand why he said it, but he said, "We're put on notice." Given those things, it seems the board may be subject to some litigation at this point. With that, then, I'm gonna look to our counsel to be sure we're under, we're rightly to go into executive session at this juncture to consider the possible threat of litigation, I believe.
I would agree that imminent, litigation is imminent.
So moved.
So, I'm sorry, did you say so moved?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, so there's been a motion from Mr. Mallory to go into executive session. I will second the motion.
For the purpose?
Okay, so let's.
Of the purpose, as indicated by our counsel, and again, I don't want to restate your motion. Our counsel has told us, let's, couple things that I want the record to be clear about. Mr. Hartman even responded to my suggestion that litigation may be imminent by acknowledging that, right, Mr. Hartman?
That is correct.
So, litigation may be imminent. Also, in addition to that, our counsel has indicated that we are acting in a quasi-judicial manner proceeding here, given that there's a motion for reconsideration of one of our decisions. So, I think there's ample cover here under the law to allow us to go into executive session and consult with our legal counsel, given that, first, yeah. So, with that, there's been a motion, I'll second that motion.
Okay, roll call. Ms. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Trantfilo?
Aye.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Chair's ready, I'll make a motion, then we come out of executive session.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Trantfilo?
Aye.
Mr. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Madam Chair, so it's clear, again, we went into executive session to discuss imminent litigation. Again, that was part of the record before we went into executive session. It seems to me that we, well, at this point, I'm just gonna move on and make, make it clear that the board was presented with an affidavit, as I referenced earlier, from Kimberly Springer. Do you think we need a motion to accept that as new evidence?
I think so.
Fair enough. So, again, this is, this is just to accept the evidence that's presented by Ms. Powell on the affidavit of Kimberly Springer. So, I'll move that we accept that into the record here for purposes of the reconsideration motion.
Second.
All those, any more discussion?
And the part petition that's attached is part of the affidavit.
Thank you, I was gonna say that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? That motion carries.
Then, moving along, back to the original matter that is on our agenda today and that has us here, and that is the, let's see, make sure I get my agenda here so I say it right. We're here again in a reconsideration hearing for reconsideration of certification of Cincinnati City Council candidate petitions. There were two, again, Ms. Powell and Mr. Brinkman. I'll do those individually, as suggested by my colleague and friend, Mr. Gerhart. I'll move that we, I'll move that we certify Mr. Tom Brinkman to the ballot in the fall election, and that would be, that we uphold the motion for reconsideration and place him on the ballot.
I will second that motion and just make clear for the record that an affidavit and the relevant part petitions were previously submitted to this board and accepted into evidence. I just want to make sure that's clear for the record, that they are to be part of the record.
Yeah, in terms of comment on that, yeah, this would be the affidavit of Jacqueline Gooch and Pat Richardson. Those are both made part of the record, I believe, at the last proceeding, as best I can tell. Mr. Stevenson is nodding yes. Okay, so yeah, that's my motion, and.
Any more discussion?
Roll call.
I'm not sure that's.
No, roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, all those, anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Anyone abstaining? None.
I've got another motion. This would be that we grant the motion for reconsideration filed by Ms. Powell, and we certify her to the fall ballot as well.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposing?
Nay.
Nay? Anyone abstaining? That motion.
Motion carries.
Okay, so that seems to be back to the agenda.
Yeah.
Back to the agenda. Any more discussion, Ms. Poland or Mr. Landau?
Not from staff.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a.
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure, with respect to my original comments, I was also seeking reconsideration. Can I add your mic?
Microphone.
Sorry. As I indicated, I was trying to, also presenting the reconsideration request on behalf of Ms. Matthews, not trying to resurrect or remedy any signature, but in terms of challenging and questioning the board's legal authority under 3501.39 to invalidate her petition last Tuesday. So, I want to make sure the record is clear that that is also a request to this board.
Mr. Stevenson, anything you want to say on the record here?
Candidates were instructed to file something in writing by close of business on yesterday, and that did not happen with respect to this.
In addition, it's not on our agenda today.
That's right.
But I would point out for the record, the indication was to file stuff to try to resurrect or correct, remedy signatures, but the board acted as it did, and we will proceed accordingly with respect to Ms. Matthews as well, then, if the board's not gonna take it up today.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October the 12th, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. Need a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, just to remind the board, sorry, apologize for that, that is indicated on your agenda, but there's a special meeting scheduled for September 13th at 10:30 a.m. regarding a voter challenge hearing.
10:30 that day or 9:30?
10:30.
10:30?
10:30.
10:30 on the 13th?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to get a verbal motion for reconsideration. I have, I want to present my evidence for today. I think you guys have me coming up here, I want it to be more public, I didn't want it to be behind closed doors of all the different things. I have a mountain of things. In fact, I have one paper, they didn't even, they didn't even look at my signatures at all on this page, at all.
Sir, on the agenda today?
Yes.
Was basically the two that we discussed, and my understanding, I do not recall your scheduling a time to be on the agenda today.
Oh, wait, wait, so you guys did not tell me to come here on Thursday in the morning? On Tuesday, you guys told me to come here on Thursday morning? This is my first rodeo, this is my first time around, I didn't know I had to put a motion, I could have put a motion in. I'm trying to do a verbal motion right now. I have, I have things right here where, like I said, they didn't even, they didn't even look over these, at all, at all. You can look at it right now. And you guys are saying my petition? Now, I have all this evidence showing, and he messed up all these pages, and I didn't get to go through all of them, this is 25 different pages with all different mistakes on them, I could show you. I could not call it fraud? What can I, what should I, what should I call this? But, but you guys, I would love to show you, I want to be able to present it. In fact, I have a projector back there. I want to be able to show everyone all the different things. It may take a little bit of time, but it's all the different things that he messed up on my thing on purpose. Now, we're gonna do this to the people?
Sir, could you, again, identify yourself, your name?
My name is Nathan Ayah Israel.
Thank you, Mr. Israel.
And, like I said, I would love to give you all this, but like I said, I have a projector, and I was trying to get the internet so I can pull it up and show you all every single time where it said, "Well, he's not registered." Well, he is registered. Well, it's the wrong address. It is the right address, and this happened. I mean, I have it right here over 50 times. I mean, and like I said, I had this one, not even, not even counted, and I have a pile over there. I wasn't even able to put the Secretary of State print out with the sheet to show. I wasn't even, I wasn't even able to finish all of them, but I have a lot of them right here that you all can see, where I stapled.
Sir, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just to see if I can help put a finer point on it for you. Were you prepared today to present sufficient information that would have made up, because you were short about 150, I'm just give or take?
Well, and then that was, that was false, too. That was false, too. It was.
145.
145, okay.
They were saying 145, but right here, it says 167, and truth be told, like I said, they didn't even count, there was so much error, I really believe I was just, I was sabotaged, honestly.
Sir, can I just, can I help you? I'm trying to help. So, were you going to try to present enough information that would have made up the 145? Or, because last time, I think you said you'd been through about 30, you thought?
Yeah, 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 well, you know, truth be told, there's a lot more to get. I got about 70 now, but I, but you know what, it's only, I only had a day I do work, so I had to sit here.
So, even if we totally, so even if we totally agreed with you today, you'd still be short.
Well, I would have, well, you know, truth be told, somebody has to be accountable for this, I mean, this is gonna happen, this is happening to everybody's ballot, this is only happening to mine, where I have to find all of these mistakes.
Madam Chair, it seems to me.
And then, and then it's my fault, because a day goes past, I have to find all the rest of the mistakes. That's not fair.
It seems to me that this, this would be in the realm, not so much of a challenge, because he's not, he wouldn't have enough information, even as he's alleged. I think what he's concerned about is staff operations, so maybe it would be appropriate to have him communicate with the members of our staff.
I'm the only person the staff did this to.
I'd also like to indicate that Mr. Israel, am I pronouncing, please tell me, okay, has met, has been here with the staff, and they went through all the documents.
Never.
It seems like.
They never did.
My understanding is that you were here all day yesterday.
Yeah, but then the staff, I was here by myself trying to get more, like I said, now I have 70, I had 30, now I have 70, and I have more, like I said, I have more to go get. I only had 25 of the pages I went through, I still have 13 more to go through, to find more errors.
I would, I know that you keep talking about the errors that you found that were there.
And I have a projector, I want to show you.
Sir, I would like you to reschedule or schedule time after this meeting with the staff to go through what you didn't finish yesterday. staff to go through what you didn't finish yesterday with our staff.
It needs to be more public, because I really feel like I'm getting, you know, with the staff, it's going to be like, oh, well, too bad, so sad, whoever did this, I paid $45 for this guy to go through this. I need to get that money back, too. I mean, this is ridiculous. Now I have to find the other, other 13 more pages, and the thing about it is, these signatures or the addresses, it's hard to even look them up. It's a lot, it's hard, and I'm doing somebody else's job.
Sir, I would like you to meet with the staff.
Yes.
Then you will have, work with them, I don't care if it takes two or three days, okay, for you to be able to come up and find more detail where the errors were, which you've already identified by being here yesterday a lot. You found multiple errors. So there still seems to be some more paperwork that you want to go through, and I'm just suggesting, I would like to suggest...
I'd like to be more public, because like I said, you can see all of these. In fact, I want to know the name. Who's, whose signature is this right here? Can I know the name of this person?
Sir, I think what I'm recommending is that you meet with a scheduled time after this meeting for you to meet the staff and go through those, the rest of the ones that you weren't able to do yesterday. And they, at that time, as they did yesterday, can provide information and answer most of the questions, if not all, that you have today.
Were I ever able to show this thing publicly, because obviously, when I go through it with staff, whoever did this, I'm not even getting the name for the staff who did this. I want to sit down with this person. Can I sit down with this person?
We will take note of that, sir. Thank you.
So I'm done?
Yes, sir. Meet with the staff soon as we adjourn, please.
So I'm just not on the ballot, and I got 70 messes up?
I would like you to meet with the staff.
How does he do that to people?
I would like you to meet with the staff after this, and we'll go through all the rest of your papers. Thank you. Oh, we entertain a motion to adjourn, did we?
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining?
You know what, before we...
Yes.
I don't know if we should do it on the record. I know we have a 14-day window under the guidelines of the Secretary of State, but we need to move more expeditiously than that. I was hoping maybe by the close of business tomorrow. I don't know how you feel about that.
Can we do it by today?
Yeah. My calendar needs more than just today. So I'll need, I'll try tomorrow at noon or something, by tomorrow noon, but it's going to be, actually, I'm out of town tomorrow, moving my son, so I will try to get it done late tonight.
Let's do...
But I can't tell you it won't be done. It might be first thing tomorrow morning.
Can we make sure that Barb has the affidavits that were submitted by Mr. Brinkman and Ms. Powell as well?
Barbara, you have it? We've got them, yes.
Very good. I just, again, what I was saying, so everybody's clear about it, Secretary of State, as Mr. Gerhart aptly explained last time, tells us we have 14 days on two to two votes. I'm suggesting that we expedite that so we can get to a ballot and get this decision from our secretary more quickly.
Okay.
Although it's, I'm not going to be formally bound to it candidly, because I just don't know how late I can actually stay up to do this today, but anyway, I'll do my level best to get something out.
And I think we can get it done today. Okay, yes, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.